Good evening. I'd like to call to order the November 17th City Council Meeting to Order. Could we have roll call, please?
Mayor Dukes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Buckland.
Here.
Councilmember Cleveland.
Here.
Councilmember Didball.
Here.
Councilmember Gill.
Here.
All right. We'd like to open with the invocation by Vice Mayor Buckland, but that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Didball, if you would lead us in the pledge.
If you'll bow your heads with me as I pray. Mighty Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of those that are gathered here tonight. We're truly blessed with your presence, and we ask for your guidance and a clear vision so the efforts of staff and council will benefit those who live and work in the community. Tonight, we also pray for those in other nations, especially France and just the European nations and our military, as we try to resolve some of the issues that are currently ongoing and of great stress to the international community. It's in your most blessed name that I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number one is Fire Captain Michael Rose Retirement Proclamation. Michael, if you could come forward. You can go right over here to the middle if you don't mind. Right in front.
You don't get to leave too soon.
So that the cameras can see you here. I'm gonna let you hold this.
In recognition of your retirement from the Yuba City Fire Department, Michael Rose is retired from the Yuba City Fire Department on November 14th, 2015, with over 28 years of service to the city of Yuba City and the residents of Sutter County. And Michael Rose began his 28-year tenure with the City of Yuba City Fire March of 1987. And during subsequent years, he has held the rank of Fire Recruit, Firefighter 1, Firefighter 2, Fire Apparatus Operator, and to his current rank of Fire Captain. During his 28-year career with the city of Yuba City and the fire service, Michael Rose contributed to the growth, success, and professionalism of Yuba City Fire Department and the firefighting profession. Now therefore be it resolved that I, John Dukes, Mayor of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire City Council of the city of Yuba City, do hereby honor and commend Michael Rose for his 28 years of service to the Yuba City Fire Department, the city of Yuba City, and to the people of Yuba City and Sutter County, and commend you for your 28 years' career in the fire service and wish you much success and happiness in a well-deserved retirement.
Mayor. Chief would like to say a few things. You can't get away that quick.
I won't be long-winded, but first of all, I'd like to thank Lupe, his wife, for letting us borrow him for 28 years. So I appreciate that, because there's a lot of sacrifices in the fire service, and she was great to allow us to have Mike with us. Mike's a unique person. Mike's the type of guy that you don't hear a lot about, but he's a hard charger and he's a hard worker, and he's done a great job for us. And one thing he's always kept up for us is he's always made it very safe for the people he served and took care of the community, and he also took care of his engine company. So, Mike, as a friend who grew up in the fire service with you, and as your chief, thank you very much for your years of service.
Would you like Sandy?
It's been a great place to have a career in the fire service. My wife and I decided to settle down here. We raised our kids here. We plan on sticking around here. We really like it. We're very happy here, and I just thank the city of Yuba City for a great career. Been very happy here, and thank you to the council for inviting me tonight. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
Next, we have the National Family Caregivers Month, and I'd like to invite Joyce Scott from Tri-County Caregivers Relief to come forward. Deborah. Deborah Brooks. Glad to have you here also. I'll let you hold the proclamation here as I read this. Okay. November is National Family Caregivers Month. Respite Care for Caregivers. Family caregivers greatly improve and quality of life for their loved ones, spending an average of 20 hours per week providing care. Over 90 million family caregivers in the United States are the backbone of the nation's long-term care system, thus enabling loved ones to stay at home longer. Family caregivers are the only people who are present with patience in all care settings. Respite services protect a family caregiver's own health. Strength, family relationships, prevent burnout, and can enable a care recipient to stay at home up to three times longer. Now therefore be it resolved that I, John Dukes, Mayor of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2015 as National Family Caregivers Month with the theme of Respite Care for Caregivers. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. I have the great privilege of running a respite agency here in our community, and to have respite singled out to be the focus for this month for care providers is just a tremendous thing. So, thank you so much for the proclamation, and thank you.
Would you like to say anything? All right. Well, thank you. I know what you do is very important, because many fam-
It's been very instrumental in a lot of things that we have to add, so thank you.
Because taking care of family members can be a very difficult thing, and it is hard for those family members. In many cases, it's much harder on the person giving the care than the person receiving the care, and that's why the respite care is so important. So, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Next is public communication. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comments taken on the items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard under item number five, Appearance of Interested Citizens. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Do we have any written requests?
None were received.
All right. Item five, Appearance of Interest in Citizens. Members of the public may address the City Council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on something that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Do we have anyone who wants to remove anything? I would entertain a motion on the consent calendar. So moved. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number seven, Annual Report of the Downtown Yuba City Business Improvement District, Proposed Levy and Annual Assessment for 2016. Presented by Darren Gale.
We've even got one of these big mics up here now.
Yes, you do.
So, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Darren Gale, Economic Growth and Public Affairs for the city of Yuba City. Annually, it's my pleasure for the last few years to bring forth really a two-part process of seeing our renewal of our downtown business association. It's done on an annual basis. We have a very strong DBA. We're very lucky to have Cindy Payne as the president of that organization. And I come to think about it, it's been a long time since an actual property owner has been the president of the DBA. I don't know how long that's been, but it's been a significant amount of time, and it's great to see a property owner who's also a business owner on the street. In addition to Cindy Payne, we have a few of the board members. David Holycross, Leanne Semino with, going blank on the new bank name. Okay. Suncrest, soon-to-be Suncrest, and Allison Robinson from Theater Gallery, represented here tonight. I'm gonna go ahead and turn the time over to Cindy to give her annual report, but I would like to just preface it with that we have a strong viable DBA that provides an amazing service to the, not just to the businesses down there, but they're really our largest public place, that we have our two largest community events, both strolls, and it's all due to the efforts that Cindy and her board does on an annual basis. So I'll turn the time over Cindy, and then I can finish up the presentation at that point.
All right. Thank you, Darren. Welcome, Cindy.
Thank you. Oh, I guess I don't have to touch that.
You can pull it down.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor John Dukes, and the rest of the council. Appreciate you for taking the time to listen to us. Thank you to my fellow board members for here to support me today. As I have a PowerPoint, and honestly, Darren, where are you? I've never, thank you. Okay. To show, this is the boundaries of Pluma Street. The big yellow blotch is the Tea Garden House, actually, showing the residential. Also, we have some of the side streets are partially of the different sections of our assessment. This is our Board of Directors. As you can see, I'm the president. I own the Tea Garden House Event Center, and also Jerry Stereo. We have Joe Federico as the owner of the Happy Viking as the vice president. Treasurer is Leanne. Secretary Angela, and you can see the rest of the board members. We also have some different committees. This is how they're all broken up. We have very active committees. Everything is on the first, or the Thursdays of every month, so it's easy to remember for all of us busy people. This is, I cannot see, so let me go to my stuff. It says what we, let's see. Okay. My accomplishments. Sorry. My glasses are good. It's like in-between there. Shows what we've done for the accomplishments of the year. We... Well, you can probably read that better than I. Okay. We attend the city council meetings. We have Twilight Thursdays, which we had every Thursday, along with our farmer's market. Summer Stroll, which is a free community event, which is very successful. I'd say we have approximately 10,000 people participate in that. In October, November, we have our Holiday Passport, which is also coming up this Thursday night. Hopefully, you guys can stop by at the bank. They're having an open house, and also several of the businesses will be open. I hope you can stop by. We also have a passport that you could take around and get stamped to different participating businesses, and we'll be having the drawing of the gift certificates from different businesses will be the winner for that. And also, we have the Christmas Stroll coming up, December 12th. Hopefully, all of you can participate. It's a Saturday. We're also gonna have a little parade about, I think it's about 6 o'clock. Hopefully, we can honor Singin' Johnny this year. He's been a fixture in this area for years and years and years, and we do the tree lighting and really hope all of you can attend that. And I'll talk to Foteen and get you somehow in that parade if you'd like to. So, it's more of a walking parade. So, okay. And just a few pictures of some of our strolls, some of the beautification that we've done with the city's dollars that you guys have done to make the place beautiful. A lot of our associate members who have seen the importance of being part of our downtown business association, that we are a very community-involved, community-orientated area. We have some new businesses. Poppy's is open. We have Justin's Kitchen. And Poppy's has taken the place of, yeah, no, Posh Decor. So, and then also businesses that reopened is Foteen's. We also have a, and then we have one that's not on here, Tamale World. They're also open now, too. Business that has closed is Chuck Farm, Chuck Jones State Farm Insurance. They were associate member. Cafe Olivetti, they were replaced by Justin's Kitchen, and the squeezed-in, Foteen has now taken their location. Any questions?
Any questions?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
One of the things I noticed on the map is that a lot of the associate members are either on Plumas or the side streets connecting to Plumas, and have you ever considered the idea of actually making it an expanded, now on these side roads, down Plumas a little bit farther as a official downtown-type membership, or making the, discussing that? Because it seems like they're interested enough to where, you know, including them into the actual association officially and expanding your boundary of the official, you know? And then, of course, you're the house, now that it's actually a business, change that. Do some updating on the, what the-
On the map itself.
Designations, yeah.
Right, yeah. Actually, I was paying fees, though, too. I didn't get the residential rate, so. But that's a good point.
Making it official on the map, because it's, you know-
Exactly. Yeah. We'll make sure we get that updated. We do have a Zone B for areas like the Cookie Tree and that area. There was a reason a few years ago that that complex wasn't with, wasn't included in there, so that's something that we should go back and reexamine. Good idea. Thank you, Stan.
I'm just thinking that they seem to be very cooperative and with the DBA and some of the others that, you know, maybe an official inclusion in that or opportunity maybe if they want to be.
Yeah.
A nice thing to do.
Yeah. Center Street is included in it, so is Tea Garden to Chasta Street, and then Forbes Avenue to a certain level, I believe it's to Walnut Street.
I've noticed that there's those shaded areas that we're on there that has some, you know, some Zone B.
Right, yeah. And I will get with the board at our next meeting and address that issue.
There's even a few businesses even over on Chasta, too, so those might be explored also as a part of it. Expand it, because the downtown is a little bit larger. There's opportunities to.
And I believe this-
But I know it's all business, I mean, property owner-driven, if they really, you know, want to be interested or not, but.
Right. And I believe this is an older map that was originally implemented several years ago. I bet at least eight to 10 years ago. So it is time to update that map.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I like what you're doing down there, really. It's-
Oh, thank you.
It's a lot of fun to be involved.
Yeah. It is nice, and it's also nice to, we appreciate everything the city's done to make it look so good for all of us. We do appreciate it. And I've noticed that if you ever watched some of the news channels that come down, they always choose Pluma Street to be a feature. So that's, that's very nice. We appreciate that a lot. So, I hope you guys approve our association dues again for the next year, and that's about it, unless you have any other questions.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. I would entertain a motion unless, Darren, you've got more for us?
Nope. Just the motion.
All right.
I'd like to move approval of the annual report as filed, adopt the resolution of intention to levy and collect 2050 annual assessments.
I'll second that.
Set up public hearing, December 15th.
I'll second that.
All right. Have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Item number eight, Fifth Street Bridge Replacement Project, High-Priority Project Fund Transfer Letter. Diana Langley.
Good evening. So before I get into the item of the High-Priority Project Fund Transfer Letter, I wanted to take this opportunity to give you an update on the Fifth Street Bridge project. So here's a nice rendering of the potential of what the new Fifth Street Bridge could look like, and we've added the additional rendering at the bottom right corner showing the two eastbound lanes into Marysville going underneath the Union Pacific Railroad Bridge there. Here is a snapshot of the alignment, and then the next few pictures will go into more detail. Here's a proposed typical section for the alignment, and it's important to note, so the, going to the left of the screen is north, and so it has a, basically a 10-foot shared path. It'll have a concrete barrier between the path and the travelway, a four-foot shoulder, two 12-foot travel lanes each direction, and then also a six-foot, basically center, I'll call it just a center shoulder. It's six feet, so in the future, if we ever need to put a structure in there to physically separate the lanes, we can, and still have a shoulder. But at this point, we're proposing this layout. And then we would also incorporate some decorative features such as the streetlights, and then also look at the rails and things like that, that we can really incorporate the flavor of the community. And just a reminder, this is a joint project between Sutter County, Yuba County, Marysville, and Yuba City. So on the Yuba City side, you know, Bridge Street would then become four lanes, two lanes each direction, and so it would change Bridge Street basically east of Boyd Street to where you could not continue westbound on that portion of Bridge Street. You would need to go north and then get on the on-ramp to get on the Fifth Street to go westbound on Bridge Street. So that changes that, how that flows a little bit. And then with this project, we'd be installing traffic signals at the Bridge Street, Second Street intersection, and then also the ramps. On the Marysville side, it's basically incorporating the two travel lanes each direction, and then you would keep a free right onto J Street there. And then the middle section, this, we're proposing to build the new bridge to the north of the existing bridge. Through construction, we could keep the existing bridge open. You would build basically the northerly lanes, transfer traffic while you're building the southern portion, more so on the Marysville side where you're tying in, is where you have the, that section that's in conflict. But, you know, we are confident that we could keep the Fifth Street Bridge open during construction. So completed to date, in 2010, a contract was awarded for the preparation of a project study report, project report, which is the document required to analyze different alternatives. In 2013, that report was completed. And also in 2013, a contract was awarded for preliminary design services. CACOG awarded the $17.1 million grant, which was huge. August 2014, the City Council adopted a mitigated negative declaration and awarded a final design contract to Dockin. Also in 2014, Caltrans issued a finding of no significant impact. And in May of 2015, Caltrans authorized the final design right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation portion of the project. So that's the stage that we're in right now. So next steps, in January, we'll be meeting with Caltrans to discuss the high-cost project agreement. Because of the high costs of this project, we have to execute an agreement with Caltrans to spell out how the funding will be obligated over the entire period of construction. Because it's such a huge amount, you have to identify, you know, in what federal fiscal years you will be obtaining funding, and some situations, it requires advanced construction. So that basically you're awarding the construction contract with the understanding that in the future federal fiscal years, Caltrans is going to be obligating the funds. So it's not necessarily that they're obligating the total amount upfront, but that's part of the agreement, is that you're agreeing as to how it's going to be funded. We're expecting the design to be complete no later than November 2016, and so we would be hoping to bring the plans and specs to council for approval in November of 2016. We're expecting the right-of-way to be certified in December 2016. We are in various stages of right-of-way acquisition right now. For the Copeland property located on the north side of Bridge Street, we need partial right-of-way and a public utility easement. The appraisal is expected to be completed this month. For the Union Pacific Railroad property on the Yuba City side, we need to acquire five parcels. We're doing, handling this as a dual track, so we're doing it through this process, but then we're also still working with Union Pacific to purchase all of the, their right-of-way through Yuba City. Union Pacific Railroad right-of-way on the Marysville side, we need partial right-of-way and a PUE from one parcel. A field meeting has been held with UP, and the Platts and legal descriptions are currently in progress. And then GECI, which is the piece right here at, in the Marysville side where the free right would be located. We're evaluating as both a partial and full acquisition, and then including the relocation of one business. Soil testing is complete, and we're expecting the report this month to show whether or not there's any contamination. And then the appraisals will be completed after the soils report is received. So with that, we're expecting construction. It's still gonna be two years to complete. We're expecting it to start July 2017, and what's really triggering that is CTC allocation of STIP funds. We're expecting that to take place in July 2017, and so we would expect the project, the bridge, to be completed in October 2019. Funding, the total project estimate is $70 million. $46.4 million from the Highway Bridge Program, $3.2 million from the Regional Surface Transportation Program, $17.4 million from Regional Improvement, State Transportation Improvement Program Fund. So that, when I was talking about the CTC allocation of the STIP, that's referring to those dollars. And then local fund portion is $2.6 million. So that's what gets us to the discussion tonight related to the High-Priority Project Fund Transfer Letter. When the city received, or when the project, originally it's through Sutter County, when the project received high-priority project funds totaling $3,599,600, $3,599,600, that was based upon a project that was going to convert a railroad bridge into a highway bridge spanning the Feather River between Yuba City and Marysville. Once we got through the environmental process where we identified that the preferred alternative was actually to build a new bridge, Caltrans informed us that, okay, you can't continue to use these high-priority project funds on a go-forward basis for this project. At that point in time, they recommended that we submit an application to use the Highway Bridge Replacement Program funds to continue the next phase of the project, so we submitted the application for that, and it actually requires less of a local match. That project is 11.47% versus the high-priority replacement funds was 20%. But we, it leaves about $2.765 million of HPP funds available. And so what we'd like to do is send a letter to Congressman Gary Mindy requesting revision to the project description to allow the funds to be used for the new four-lane bridge between the communities. The letter is attached to the staff report. It's also going to the Board of Supervisors for Yuba County and Sutter County and the City Council for Marysville. Once we have the letter, we will be setting up an appointment with Gary Mindy's office, and then we will also be reaching out to others as well. CACOG has offered support, but to, we, also, Yuba County and Sutter County have both offered their lobbyists to assist us with this process to try to get this through. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Diana. Any questions of staff at this point? All right. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. All right. I have a motion and a second. Diana, I just have one comment on that center where you're not gonna put a divide there. So is that for future express lanes for commute that could be reversible between commute hours?
No, but we're trying to keep it as flexible as possible in case we ever had an emergency or if there's an accident that we can utilize that center area. If we find that there are a lot of head-on collisions that we might need to do, make some modification, whether it's just a short mounted curb that emergency vehicles could- still go over. But right now, we're just trying to keep it flexible so that that space could be utilized a multitude of different ways depending upon what's necessary.
All right. Thank you. All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number nine, Preliminary Official Statement of Successor Agency to the Yuba City Redevelopment Agency, 2015 Tax Allocation Refunding Bonds. Robin Bertagni.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. City Council authorized the refunding of the 2004 and 2007 tax allocation bonds on September 1st, 2015. The Oversight Board subsequently authorized it on the very next day on September 2nd. Then we submitted our request to the State Department of Finance. They released their approval letter to us on October 14th. Since there's quite a delay between when City Council originally approved it and now when we're getting ready to go to market, I have to come back before you tonight somewhat perfunctory and ask you to approve the preliminary official statement. You have already approved this process. It's a win-win for us. We will save money in long-term interest costs by proceeding with the refunding. But it's, the official next step is to ask City Council to please approve the official statement, which was included as part of the agenda packet, and approve the resolution that was attached to the staff report.
All right. Thank you. Any questions of staff?
Move to approve staff's recommendation.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number 10, Fiscal Year 2014-15 Year-end Budget Numbers and Related Fiscal Actions. Robin, you're back up.
I am. As you're all very well aware, the city struggled with deficits for many years. In fact, having deficit operating results for the general fund in five of the last six fiscal years through fiscal year 1314. In fiscal year 1314, we had a surplus of $636,000. The most recent fiscal year ended June 30th, 2015, we had a larger surplus at $1.85 million. And the reason for this surplus, it's largely due to employee vacancies. Finance looked to see how much the savings was from employee vacancies. It was $1.76 million for the fiscal year ended. As you know, continue, human resources continues to place a large priority on recruitment and filling vacancies throughout the city. It's important for us to recognize that these vacancy savings are one-time in nature. They're not reoccurring. And once people are hired to fill the vacant positions, these dollars will be spent. Finance is bringing this information forward at this time, prior to even coming forward with the CAFER of the Year-end Financial Report, to begin the discussion of general fund unmet financing needs that we haven't been able to meet in recent years. The city's been budgeting and expending the minimum amounts necessary to serve the citizens of the city, and that's okay during a recessionary period. But it's not a good long-term strategy on a go-forward basis. We've officially closed our ledgers for fiscal year 1415 and have the city's independent auditors onsite for the fiscal year-end audit. The city's financial policy for the general fund dictates a reserve of 15%. This is based upon the minimum threshold best practices recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFPA, and serves the cash flow needs of the city. The 15% reserve required per our financial policies equals $5,613,000. The preliminary financial data that's presented here shows our revenues, transfers in, it was included in the staff report, and results in the surplus of the $1.85 million. After deducting outstanding purchase order commitments totaling $382,000 and a total of $1,028,000 in order to achieve that 15% surplus, it leaves a remaining $441,000 available to fulfill other one-time needs. The unmet financing needs for the general fund that staff has indicate, has identified include a handful of items, including Calper's unfunded liabilities of just under $50 million, deferred infrastructure maintenance and replacement needs throughout the city, beat six startup costs for police services, including one-time costs, and the delay of property tax receipts during the transition of police services when that occurs, construction of park facilities in the Tierra Buena area, and economic development initiatives. The city didn't have excess general fund dollars during the recession to fund any of these unmet needs that I identified to you. These items and others that may be identified by the city council could be funded through the one-time money fund that I'm recommending we begin to put funds into. I'm bringing this forward tonight for your consideration and discussion with a request to designate $441,094 as a one-time money fund reserved for future use towards unmet general fund needs. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
All right. Any questions of Robin?
Nope.
All right. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
All right. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Item number 11, City Council Reports. Councilmember Cleveland.
Yes, had a meeting with the housing authority of this past couple of weeks. And again, we had a couple of the family self-sufficiency members learning how to, or get themselves and help up and hand out, instead of a handout, that are no longer on the rolls. They're tax, full taxpayers, no public assistance of any kind. We had two more graduates. This is the biggest year we've had on it. I think we're going to end up with somewhere between 18 and 20 people that are going to graduate from it this time. And these people are very grateful. They are the best salespeople to get other people to do that in, in the housing authorities to, instead of just sitting there, get out there and become participants and move themselves up. Also, I do have one other item that I was asked to, I guess, do a presentation for Yuba City and what's going on and stuff like that. And the staff put together, you guys probably got it in your email or copy now in the, your mail box, but it's, come on, is I presented the November 12th current projects, a little document here. And hopefully, we will continue to do this. You know, whenever we notice a significant difference in what's being presented, that we'll update them and it's something we can hand to the citizens and keep it in our vehicles and some talking points and pictures and stuff that will, you know, we can be able to have a document and hand it to them. And, because people really like to have things in their hands and, and it, there was, they were extremely pleased that that was there. So, that I have nothing else.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Dibball.
We had two of our meetings, which was the Yuba City Unified School District Government Liaison Meeting. In that, it was pretty much regular business. The, the areas that stood out in that meeting were the future improvements to Berry School as well as Tierra Buena. And then also the subject that came up before, which was approximately the 300 children that on Friday, when they leave school is their last meal until they come in back on Sunday. So there is a program that's been already in place where groceries are given on Friday so that they have food over the weekend until they get back to school on Monday. The food, that program has now been extended to where they're looking to do the dinner also on Friday before they leave and then give them food on, on the weekend, groceries to help them get. One of the things that was brought up, that even though they are getting these groceries, they actually don't have any protein. So it's more of your, you know, carb foods, cereals, things like that. So the protein is still not there. And that's very important for the growth of these kids. So I'm still trying to put our minds together to see what else we can do and to expand those programs hopefully through other entities that we have in our, in our community. So I know we can do it. So it's important. But those are the two items that really stood out for me in that. And Councilmember Buckland, if he has anything to add on. We also had the transit meeting. And that was pretty much a very, very short meeting, just regular business. So not much to discuss there.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Gill.
First of all, I just want to say thank you to all the council members for attending the Veterans Day Parade. I think it's always nice to see that from the city of Yuba City, all five council members are represented. And not only at this community event, it seems like quite a bit of them, that we're the only contingency or contingent that there is always representation compared to the other agencies where they get one or two and none at all. So it's gonna, kinda says a lot. Other than that, we've don't, we have not had a Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency meeting. It is tomorrow. We have continued to meet as chairman of the board for the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency. Seems like we've been going head-to-head with the Indian tribes. So I've asked for a meeting with the head chief from one Indian to the other Indian to be had within the next two weeks so we can get some resolution and some closure because they continue to put obstacles and hurdles in our way to continue, you know, prolong our process so that we can continue to finish what we need to get done in 2016 because there's still some gaps in that area that we've got to get done. And we cannot get those gaps done without their approvals. And it seems like we're kind of a ping pong between three different, you know, facets between the Indian, Indians and the United Auburns and, you know, so we've just asked for a direct face-to-face meeting to clarify some stuff. So we're hoping that'll get done within the next two weeks and get some outcome out of that. And so we'll, every day, there's some kind of meeting going on. So, well, we'll have more to report at the next, after the next city council meeting.
Yes. All right.
That's all I got.
Vice Mayor Buckland.
Yeah, Yuba City Unified School District meeting, other than what was already addressed by Councilmember Dibball. One of the things that, that was brought up, and actually I brought it up, was I saw a product put out by Sutter High School. Has nothing to do with Yuba City Unified, so I don't think that I'm wandering too far off base here. But it was a, a piece of metal work that was done for Sutter County. And it's a bicycle rack that depicts the Buttes and has Sutter County cut into it. And it was done in, in one of their metal, I can't call it a shop anymore, it's metal lab of, of some sort. Absolutely remarkable piece of work done by a high school, and high school students. And I would encourage us as a government to support our schools in every way we can and possibly work to find out what kind of products can we bring forward to promote the city of Yuba City through our two high schools and through their, their different classes and certainly support the students' efforts to produce high-quality work, just like what I saw. And I'm, and I'm talking, this looked like a professional piece that would come out of, out of any high-end metal shop. Transit, one thing to note is apparently we have a need for new buses. And don't be shocked if you see some orders coming forward. They're trying to, to buy these buses through a, a joint agreement with another agency so we can get the, the prices down. And we keep being promised that Connect Card is coming. Connect Card was supposed to start about 18 months ago. There's been some snafus with it. They are now talking possibly February for Connect Card. A lot of the policies and things that have, are currently in play through Yuba-Sutter Transit are really connected to the Connect Card. So this last piece needs to fall into place. And, and I think it will be a highly efficient operation at that point. Attended the Regional Waste Management. And as many of you have probably been, you know, have seen communication regarding green waste, the recommendation from the board at the RWMA is to award a contract to Sloan-Vasquez for $10,000 to look at alternatives to the onsite mitigation of the, of the water quality issues related to the collection of green waste at the Marysville site. And so they're going to look at, at alternatives like Green Solutions and some other folks within a 30-mile radius to be able to, to reduce the costs and, and ongoing costs with recology related to that and hopefully saving possibly ratepayer money. And then yesterday, attended the Government Relations Personnel Meeting at SACOG. Just a reminder, we have Region Rising coming on Thursday. It's an all-day event down at the Convention Center in Sacramento. We anticipate 1,200 attendees, great speakers will be available and, and talking. And, and for those of the public that are coming along for free, there's a lunch involved that will be there all day. So look forward to, and I believe that Yuba City has...
14.
14. We are the winners at SACOG for the most staff and, and attendees out of, out of any of the, out of any of the regions members at SACOG. So we've done well. Also, received a update on cap and trade related to affordable housing. The funds available through that have increased by about 300% from the first allocation to now. So we'll be looking at, at opportunities for tapping into some of those grant funds as that money becomes fully available and available for consideration. So that's all I have.
All right. Just to clarify, that's on Friday, correct? The Region Rising?
I'm sorry. It's on Fri...
To be confused on what day it's on.
I'm on a, yeah. I'm, I'm in another meeting down there on Thursday evening, and it's on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Last week, attended the ribbon cutting for the SBDC at the Yuba-Sutter Chamber, which now gives them another tool in the toolbox to help small businesses with SBA loans and other training and classes available. So it was good to see that. It's kind of been running in the background, but it's now official that we are the Yuba-Sutter hub for that. And it was good to have that back up and running here in our community. And then attended a, the mosquito vector meeting last Thursday also, kind of a year-end report. We ended up with, it looks like it will be a total of five human cases here in Sutter County. We were quite fortunate. Yuba County ended up with eight, I believe it might be nine. But just to our north, Butte County had 53 cases, human cases of West Nile virus, and Glenn County had 19. So it's very important and the slight difference of how we treat mosquitoes versus how they do it, where we do the aerial spraying has made the big difference of that. So you swat yours?
Swat my mosquitoes.
Well, good. But it, a total of 512 human cases this year in the state of California. So it was quite high. So another thing just to keep in mind is we're out in the evening hours and so on. And then attended a Sutter Buttes Flood Control Meeting this morning, a different one that, that we will have tomorrow. But this was to discuss the properties down on Second Street and the options that we have for how we are going to deal with the encroachments that are in the levee and so on. And was very pleased with the creativity that they came up with to be able to do this without having to acquire a lot of property to do it. And getting Central Valley Flood Protection Board and DWR to buy into this was nothing short of a miracle. So it was, it's good that we have good creative people with the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, the administration, and they do some great things for us. So with that, oh, on Friday morning also, there is the Chamber Business Connection Meeting, our breakfast, which will be at Peachtree for the State of Beal breakfast. An update on that, but I know you're going to be heading south.
Hard to make both.
Understand. Well, I'm going to try and do a little bit of both, might be late to the one. So, all right. With that, that's all I have to report. Meeting is adjourned.